Okay, everybody's here. You ready to go? All right, all right. Welcome back, everybody. We're done with our executive session and our close session, and we're going to move into a presentation from Evergreen State College, Sandy Kaiser and John Carmichael. Welcome.
Thank you. So my name is John Carmichael. I'm serving as president of the Evergreen State College. I've been in the position for about two and a half years. I'm joined by Sandy Kaiser, Director of Government Relations, who I think some of you know. We wanted to share with you a project that we're excited about in cooperation with Shelton Schools. The goal is for the Evergreen State College to offer graduates of the Shelton Schools free tuition. Come, come to college for, without having to pay tuition costs. We're right now seeking some legislative funding that would enable us to do that. If we get that legislative funding, we would first make this offer for the Shelton graduating class of 2025 and try it out for a couple of years to see how it works. So we're looking right now for funding for the class of 2025 and the class of 2026. Want to share with you a couple of the reasons why we're doing this. One, the Washington Roundtable and others have done research that suggests that in the decades ahead, seventy percent of jobs are going to require some kind of post-secondary credential beyond high school, a two-year degree or a four-year degree or an apprenticeship, something beyond high school. In Washington State, we're way short of meeting that goal. Maybe half of Washington High School students are headed towards some kind of post-secondary credential after they graduate. So we want to address that. We know that one of the reasons is concerns about affordability that many students and families have. Understandably so. Washington State has made a lot of financial aid available, but it's complicated and the aid offer tends to come kind of late in the cycle. So I'm not sure that all students understand how much aid is available to them. And we just want to make it simple by saying for Shelton Schools for the next few years, tuition is free at Evergreen. The reason we want to do this with Shelton is, one, Shelton, if seven, if the goal is to have seventy percent of students headed to some kind of post-secondary education after high school, Shelton, almost seventy percent of the students are not headed to any kind of post-secondary credential after high school. So that's an area of great need. I don't want to single Shelton Schools out in this respect. There are certainly other districts in the state in the region that have similar profiles. We're focused on Shelton partly because we have a longstanding partnership with the schools in Shelton. We have a federal trio grant that puts some counselors and advisors from Evergreen in those schools. So we feel like we have a good foundation to work from. And we see this as a pilot. If we can demonstrate some success in the Shelton Schools, we would want to expand this and would hope that other institutions would, would pick up the template and use it across the state as well. So that, I think, is the, is my quick rundown. I want to invite Sandy Kaiser to fill in anything that I have forgotten or glossed over. Sandy?
Oh, great to see friends here, and I'm really excited to bring this proposal to you today. Governor Inslee liked this so much that he's included $738,000 the first two years of funding in his recommended budget to the legislature. And today, the legislature is actually going to hear that funding bill. I'm also delighted to share that Representative Couture and Senator McEwen are fully on board with this, very supportive, Travis especially. And of course, we've had really a lot of interest from folks in the Shelton community, excited about, you know, being the, the first to try this place-based scholarship approach. So we've got some good wind in our sails right now, and we'd just love to have some ideas and support from you all as well.
Go ahead, John.
Be happy to respond to questions, comments, ideas that you might have.
One of you want to go first, or? Go ahead, Sharon.
I'll jump in. I am super excited about this. I was looking at the, the numbers for graduates in, in Shelton and their test scores and, and things like that. So if this will give our students incentive to really apply themselves to, to school, I think that this is a great path forward. So appreciate you thinking of Shelton as a, Mason County rocks anyway, but this, this is, this is pretty cool.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well. One of, one of my hobbies is I'm an adjunct faculty member at Olympic College and gives you an idea of how I like to spend my free time. But I think this is a great opportunity for, for kids in Mason County and would, what would support, what would our support look like? Would that be a letter of support that you're looking for, some additional, you know, putting this on our, our list to, to flag for our county's lobbyists? What, what are ways that you think we can be supportive of this?
Those are, those are all great ideas, Kevin, and I would love today in my testimony at the legislature to be able to say that we spoke today and that you, you are fully on board with this. That would mean a lot.
Great. Feels like you can say that.
I'm the third one, and I can assure you that you can say it on my behalf as well. I absolutely love the idea. Sometimes the only thing a person needs is that one opportunity they never saw coming, and it changes their whole life. For me, it was one particular counselor that when I went back to college, it said you can challenge classes. When he taught me how to do that, that changed my whole life. And I started challenging every class I could get my hands on. So with that being said, though, I also just want to point out, I'm, I'm not in any way not for it. But if anything is left over, I want you to remember that Mason County has two high schools. And, you know, even if it was a small amount, it sure would be incredible to have some of those opportunities trickle into the North Mason area if it's at all possible. But I can tell you again, I'm not upset or anything because that's not here. I'm just asking you for, for consideration, but other than that, I'm fully supportive. And I think you've heard three commissioners say that today. Matter of fact, I'm going to even say I have no reservations at all. So you can, you can speak on my behalf for that freely in the legislature.
I have to respectfully correct my seatmate, Commissioner Allen. There are three high schools in Mason County and Maryam Night out in Matlock.
Oh, that's right. There's three. So, and I, I, actually, they may even have a greater need.
Yeah, we know, we can see it. And, you know, in the talking we've done around the state with various legislators, everybody's eyes are lighting up, thinking, wow, this is, this is a new way to approach this challenge because we know that most of these students are going to qualify for generous state and federal aid. It's just getting the courage to, to kind of go for it and also helping parents understand that it's a simple, a simple opportunity. It's not going to be complicated, and we're going to help them every step of the way to get them to those four-year degrees. So we're really excited.
This also might be a plug for Running Start also.
Yeah, good. Yeah, th- this is modeled off a program in Michigan that had some success in a similar problem there. So it is our hope that we can demonstrate success in Washington State and use that success to expand this program to other districts and other schools. So appreciate flagging some who should be first in line.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, anything else that you need from us?
I think Kevin lined it, outlined it really nicely. A letter would be fantastic, being able to perhaps let your folks know that who will be dealing with the legislature, that you're fully supportive, that, that would mean a lot.
Kevin, you want to take that on and put that together? Of all of us, he is spectacular at those. And I'm not just, I'm not just saying it to get him to do it. This is, we all have our niche and that he's really good. Would you mind taking that on, Kevin? And putting that together for us so we can get it out sooner?
Yeah. Yep, no problem.
Thank you so much.
Sandy, I think I have your email. I'll work with you on some language.
Great.
Been great to see you again, Sandy.
Wonderful to see you guys. All the best. Keep up the great work.
Great day.
Thanks, Al.
Okay, so we're a couple of minutes here early, but next up will be our interview for the Planning Commission. Michael, is he on here? I don't see him anywhere. Michael Hill. All right, Diane McKenzie, have either of you reached out to Michael?
Hey, Commissioner, I reached out to Michael last week, and I also had Danielle reach out this morning. Let me run out and check with her and see if he's going to be available.
Thank you. So while we wait, Commissioners, you want to go ahead and move on to the WSU extension, and then we'll come back for the planning? Are you comfortable with that?
Yep, that works.
Here, no objection. Now, we're going to go ahead and move forward with the WSU extension and, and Dan, and then we'll come back for the Planning Committee interview. Dan?
Good morning, Commission, and Happy New Year. It's my annual yay. Thank you for our partnership conversation. This is where the Commission gets to see the MOA that we have between Mason County and WSU and the great work that we partner up together to, to do. I've been doing this for 12 years now in Mason County and Grace Harbor County. And as always, I'm extremely proud and pleased with our partnership and the great work that we do together. Yesterday, I just had to share a few nuggets with you. Yesterday, we trained thirty-seven youth in, in youth leadership, a high, high school age, to run our summer camp this summer. What we're doing year-long training with, with high schoolers for leadership skills, and it's fantastic. Some other parts, our master gardeners are thoroughly planning their Through the Garden Gate series. That's professional development for horticulture here in Grace Harbor or in Mason County. We have interviews scheduled for our Noxious Weed Coordinator position, which became vacant at the end of December. So we're some great applicants for that. And our last one is, we're excited to offer some new program offerings this next year. And one of them is going to be an intro to beekeeping that we're going to be offering Mason County residents as well. So just some nuggets there for you to, to remember as we build our partnerships together.
Wonderful. Does anybody have any questions for, for Dan?
I don't, but this is cool. You're doing a great job, Dan, by the way.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I actually don't have any questions for Dan, but since I have Dan on, I do have a topic that I'd like to bring up in our relationship with the Mason County Conservation District. Is that okay if I do that?
Please do.
So there's a, so I've been in communications and, and Mason County Conservation District was working with Kella, our old Noxious Weed Coordinator, in acquiring a grant that would provide us some funds to go out and identify potential areas, survey properties that the county owns to identify potential areas that are impacted by noxious weeds. And they are applying for a grant with the Department of Natural Resources. The, I believe, packet is due today. I have received a letter of support, a recommended letter of support from Megan Chapman at the Conservation District and would love to be able to sign my name to that since I don't have a opportunity to bring it in front of the Commission as a whole in one of your regular meetings. And so I was wondering if I could get approval to, to sign that, that letter of support. This is a program that Kella talked with us about as a group and, and I don't remember any, any concerns from the Commissioners.
Commissioners, have any concerns or anything you want to discuss on that?
No, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, I'm good with Mark signing on.
Mark, go ahead and sign on our behalf, please.
Great. I will get that done today. So she can turn it in this afternoon.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dan?
I think Dan has one more thing for us.
Yeah. Say, so you have, uh, the press release you want to do first, and we're good with that going forward, right? At her note. So then you have a request to put something on the agenda?
Yep, putting the signing of the MOA, which is just your standard agreement the county has with WSU. And then you, you, you sign it, it goes up to WSU, they sign it, and we're good to go for another year.
Here we go.
Okay, any, hi, Mike.
My computer to update.
Yep, Mike, hold on one moment, and I'll get right to you here in a minute. I'm Randy. Uh, so Sharon, Kevin, are you guys okay with putting that on the agenda and moving forward? Yes, yes. You have all three, so we look forward to, to having that on our next agenda, Dan. Thank you very much. Are there any last questions for Dan? With that, thank you, Dan, and we're going to go ahead and move back to our Planning Commission interview and appointment. We have Michael Hill that has come up here, and we appreciate you. Thank you, Michael, for coming in and talking with us tonight. I want you to understand, we're going to ask you some questions, but I want you to understand there are no right answers, there are no wrong answers. It'd be as long or as brief as, as need be. It, it's not a huge thing. We just need to find out a little bit more about you and who you are and where you are in some of these questions. So with that, Commissioner Trask, I'll do number one, Commissioner Trask, if you don't mind doing number two, and Kevin, if you don't mind doing number three, and we'll move in cycle after that, okay? So I'm going to start with the first one. Michael, what do you see as the function of the Planning Advisory Commission, the PAC? You may have technical difficulty. Can you hear me, Mike?
My reason, my audio is muted. Know what's going on here?
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that. For some reason, I was having trouble with my audio, but I'm good now.
You can hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, so Mike, again, just want you to understand, we're going to ask you a series of questions. There ain't that much to it. There is no right answer or wrong answer. Please make it brief, but if you feel like you need to really break it down, feel free to do that as well. Again, no right answer, wrong answer. I'll be asking the first question, Commissioner Trask the second, Kevin the third, and we'll go in a series after that. So with that, again, thank you for being here and thank you for stepping up to do this. Let me ask you, Mike, what do you see as a function of the Planning Advisory Commission of our PAC?
To assist the board or the Planning Commission Board, I assume in this case, and advise them on like future projects, development projects, I would assume, that would affect the county, like, you know, perhaps roads or, you know, housing developments, commercial developments, that type of thing.
Thank you. Mr. Trask?
Right. Hi, Mike, how are you?
Good.
Good. So why do you want to sit on this advisory board?
Well, I think I can input, you know, my experience. And I lived in California most of my life, and I was in the construction business. And, you know, I wasn't involved in any kind of planning or anything, but I, I, because of my experience in construction, I, I understand how those things are done, you know, as far as developments and how the roads and infrastructure impact those and what the processes are. Particularly like housing developments was a problem where I lived in Bakersfield, California, because they would allow housing developments for a long time to be leapfrogged out into the rural areas without, you know, considering the impact of the infrastructure that wasn't being built. Finally, about twenty or thirty years ago, some, you know, people started to realize this is a problem. And we need to make sure that we address that when we allow these developments to be built, you know, and permit them and so forth.
All right. Thanks, Mike.
Mike, describe your familiarity and understanding of the Comprehensive Plan, Growth Management Act, and Development Regulations.
Yeah, I don't have too much experience there, other than I've looked at a couple of those when I was in California. And I, not that I didn't have the input in them, I just saw the plans, you know, read through them where they were outlining like the, I think back then it was called the, the 2020 Plan or something, and that was about twenty years before that, where they were trying to look out ahead twenty years to see how the growth, you know, would impact the area and how to plan for it.
So now, Mike, you touched on a little bit, but what is your opinion of rural development?
Well, I don't have a problem with rural development. I think it's necessary, but it has to be, you know, in a managed way. I mean, you know, I like, particularly, I love rural areas. I've lived in them all my life, and I don't want to see too much encroachment to them. But when there is, for instance, a housing development that's planned in a rural area, and it's a fairly sizable one, I think there needs to make sure that there's a, a traffic study done so we can see how that impacts, you know, traffic flow in and out of that development, especially in the rural areas where there's a lot of, you know, two-lane roads that, you know, don't have shoulders on them, for example, and they're not lit very well. And you get too much of that development out in rural areas, and it ruins the, ruins them, you know?
All right. Thanks, Mike. Do you have any conflicts of interest of the county code violations?
Say, say it again. Do I have one?
Yeah, do you have any conflicts of interest with any of the code violations?
No.
Thank you. Whoops, I stole Kevin's.
I was going to say, I'll ask the fifth question. So the board meets in the evenings at least once a month. Also has utilizes Zoom, which we're on right now. Is this an issue for you?
No.
Great.
Which, so, so if, if I understand that right, so the meetings would meet physically, and then if I couldn't attend one physically, then I could zoom in, is how that works?
That's a good question. I, I, Kel, my Kel Rowan from DCD might be on here and can provide some.
Yep, good morning. We do meet in person or by Zoom. So we have some members that do come down to the Commission Chambers the third Monday of each month from 6:00 PM. Or starting at 6:00 PM, and then we do have members that also just zoom in. So either.
Okay. So it's, it's at my discretion whether I want to zoom in or can be, okay. Then how long are the meetings usually?
It, they vary, but in, if, we've talked about, we've had meetings that went past 10:00 PM, and that's when people really get squirrely. And so we've decided that if we have some meetings coming up, because a comp plan update is considerably more work than typical years, that we will cut off meetings prior to 10:00 PM. But that, that's, that's really rare. Usually, it's an hour, two hours long.
Thank you, Kel. Hey, Mike, that brings us to our next question, actually, which is, this is your opportunity to ask questions of us that you need to know to help you to make your final decisions. I do want to say I, I am a past chair of the Planning Commission, and Kevin Schutte was also on the Planning Commission. And I can assure you, Zoom is nice, but people bring stuff in. And there are things that you may not be able to have in your hand without being there, just to, to let you know. With that being said, though, are there any questions you have for us, Mike, that would help you?
How many people are on the advisory board that I would be serving with?
Kel, how many are currently on?
It, it is a seven-member board. We have three openings right now. So four people currently serve, and that is a quorum. But we are looking for three additional members.
Thank you.
And then I would be one of those three, I presume, if I, if you accept me?
Correct.
Okay. And then, yeah, and as far as in-person, I'd much rather prefer in-person meetings. I like that idea. But from time to time, I travel, you know, so then I have the option to zoom in would be great. Let's see, what else? Think that's all I can think of at the moment.
Well, Mike, we thank you very much for coming in and stepping up. Our committees are the backbone of everything. And to me personally, the two most important committees in all the county, Planning Commission is probably still number one, even above a tip cap, as far as I'm concerned. So we appreciate you stepping up and, and giving us this opportunity. With the Commission's permission, now we'll wait until Commissioner discussion at the very end to make our final decisions and move forward. You'll hear shortly from us.
I, I did, I did think of one more question, and that would be your first question to me. And I was just thinking about my answer, the, the way I understand my role, you know, should I be accepted on the board? Did I have that correct, that, that involves, you know, planning and development of, in, in a county of rural areas and that kind of thing, and advising the board on, on the findings that we come up with and things we should be concerned about and, and ideas and so forth?
Personally, there's some yes to that, but in my own personal opinion, which is all this is, there's some no to it as well. One of the things that I always worry about when it comes to people on the Planning Commission is they have a lot of their own personal opinions. But the truth of the matter is, it all falls upon the law. And you're asked to look at what the law says in regards to this, what they're allowed to do, what they're not allowed to do. Some of the personal opinion does have a, does make a difference, and then people come in and speak to you, and it makes a difference. One of the things I remember that changed me is when I found out that we were looking at a zoning for a specific issue. And we found out if we changed this issue, they could literally build an amusement park there, and it didn't matter. That's what we were talking about. And so the law is the law. So that's my opinion on that. Commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to add on that?
I think that sums it up pretty well.
Yeah. Kel, would you like to add anything on that as well?
Mason County, not Shelton.
Yeah.
I will say, just to clarify, that Mason County does have a hearing examiner system for type-three reviews. So for development projects that need a conditional use permit, a special use permit, those types of things for specific development, that tends to go to the hearing examiner. Whereas the Planning Commission and the board will review reasons, comp plan amendments, development regulation amendments, things like that. So you're not going to necessarily be looking at very specific developments from a developer.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if they built a big one out in the middle of nowhere, they would have to go through all that process because we don't, it's not allowed right now. But so you're still correct on that as well, Mike. Anything further?
I, I just thought of another question. So as far as being on the board, I, I would assume then that there would be material I'd be given from time to time that I would need to review and study to prepare myself for a meeting. And is that, is that the case?
Yes, and you'd also be expected to follow certain criteria such as not meeting with the individuals and stuff like that as well.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But Kel will get you completely up to stuff on that if you're accepted into the position.
Okay.
All right, Mike, thank you so much for being here today. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Have a good day.
Okay, so thank you, Kel, by the way. So next up, we're going to go ahead and go to the auditor's office. Steve, are you available?
Sure. I actually think we have a second planning advisory committee interview today.
I only have one on my.
So Will Harris.
I'll bring you the application, Commissioner.
Yeah, please. It's not on mine. So Will, we're going to go ahead. I, I don't know your, go ahead, Sharon.
Yeah, his, his is in the community development packet or portion. His application. I believe it's on page.
It's page seventy-two.
It's on page seventy-one.
That's, I have right here. Okay, so we're going to go ahead. Will, thank you again for being here as well. We appreciate that. I'm sure you heard how important that this is to this commission, this, these positions. As far as we're all concerned, there are very little that a citizen could do on a committee that would have as great an impact as this particular position. So thank you for stepping up and being willing to even take on such a chore. With that being said, I'm going to go ahead and do the same thing. We'll be asking you some questions. There is no right answer. There is no wrong answer. It's just whatever answer you give. Being brief is always appreciated, but if you feel you need to expand on it, please do. I will ask the first question, Commissioner Trask the second, and Commissioner Schutte the third. And this time, Commissioner Trask, if you want to ask the same one, you're welcome to. With that being said, so Will, what do you see as the function of the Planning Advisory Commission?
Commissioner, I see the function of the Planning Advisory Commission as to, you know, we are an advisory board to you, the Commissioners. Looking at, you know, we are the civilian community input to the overall planning of the community, whether that's land use, whether that's capital improvements, such as the capital improvement project that the PAC is currently reviewing. It's the breadth of all community involvement, economic growth, residential growth, et cetera. And particularly as we come into this next year, I find it a very exciting opportunity because, as I'm sure as board members very well know, we're relooking at the entire comprehensive plan for the, for the county. And the current one, and let's just face it, we have some challenges out there. So what the, the role of the PAC to be able to bring stuff to you as the Commissioner Board, I, I see it really critical, given the projected growth from sixteen to thirty-six, and the current plan actually has already been met. projected growth from sixteen to thirty-six and the current plan actually has already been met in twenty twenty-four. You know, we're al- already at eighty-three thousand, six hundred, which we weren't projected in the last plan for another decade to get there. So I think it's, it's absolutely critical. I think it's gonna be an exciting role to be able to, to fill and help develop out and help, uh, influence where we're headed as a county over the next two decades.
All right. Thank you. Um, Will, why do you want to sit on this advisory board?
I wanna help my community. I love Mason County. I, I grew up in Washington State, did, uh, two and a half decades in our air force as an engineering officer. And as such, I did community planning, did design and construction, and ops and maintenance of infrastructure systems. And bottom line, I feel like this role plays to my strengths. I feel like I can help and support the community, provide good advice that, um, can support and build on what public works is already doing. And it's just an opportunity to give back.
Can't hear you, Kevin.
Yeah. Uh, well, we already kinda started to touch on it a little bit, but, uh, describe your familiarity and understanding of the comprehensive plan, growth management act and development regulations.
Can you please repeat the question, Commissioner Schutte?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, please describe your familiarity and understanding of the comprehensive plan, growth management act and development regulations.
Okay, my, my understanding of the comprehensive plan is, you know, at this point I have scanned the document, I have three or four chapters at this point, along with a fairly good read of chapter eight, transportation and planning. With regards to, uh, you know, the growth management, I do need to understand more and read more. That's one of the reasons I've been attending, uh, the last, uh, couple, two or three public advisory, uh, the planning advisory commissions I've been attending in person. So I can, you know, learn before I volunteer, have an idea of what the, what's involved. And, um, so, so, uh, I understand some, but I have more to learn.
Thank you.
What is your opinion of rural development?
My opinion, Commissioner, I love the outdoors. My first recollection of Mason County was as a Cub Scout out, out at Hobus. I'd like to see us, uh, you know, keep and maintain our natural environment, but also recognize our development needs. And I think that right now, I think the comprehensive plan has a really good focus. Where, you know, sixty, seventy percent of our growth is likely focused in Belfair, the unincorporated area of Allen and Shelton. And I think that's where the focus is. We build up the other areas. We ensure the transportation and basic infrastructure systems, water, sewer, internet in particular, to help and support our education. All of those are things we need to focus on. But I, uh, more on the rural side, I, I see it maintaining a lot of the existing rural nature that we have.
All right. I'm gonna get my question right this time. This board meets in the evening at least, uh, once a month currently using Zoom. Will this be an issue?
Not at all. And we, you can look at the attendance rosters, the last two or three packs to show that I've been there.
All right. Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, and do you have any conflicts of in, conflicts of interest uh, of county code violations or anything along those lines?
No, Commissioner Schutte.
Uh, do you have any questions for us? This is your opportunity to ask questions that would help you to decide. I see that you're, are you currently still on the tip cap?
I, I am on tip cap. Yes, sir. And, uh, no, I don't, I don't have any questions. Like I said, as I've attended a a few of the PAC meetings, I've met the, the current, uh, Chair of the Board, Bob, and talked with other members. And I have a good feel of what we're doing. I believe this very much pulls to my strengths as a professional engineer. And based on, you know, basically two and a half decades doing this in our air force around the world.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Will, we wanna thank you for coming here today and giving us this opportunity to talk to you. Uh, at the end of our, our meeting today during commissioner discussions, we'll have further discussions and you'll hear from us shortly.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Everyone. Y'all have a great day now.
Have a great day.
Bye-bye.
Okay, next up, Steve. Steve Dunkel, there you are. Uh, Steve, uh, you're gonna meet with us in regards to planning?
Clear. I have to get off mute. Hey, good morning, Commissioner Netherlands. Good morning, Commissioner Schutte, and good morning, Commissioner Trask. Hey, I, uh, back in July, you guys gave me a, an assignment, uh, or agreed to give me an assignment to put together a proposed resolution to create a, um, uh, citizens' commission for, for salaries for elected officials. So I had, uh, put one together and sent it to McKenzie. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to review it. I don't have a a presentation prepared at this time to step you guys through it, but it's basically the same highlights as last time. The proposed commission would exist of ten members. Six of those would be selected by, uh, the county auditor's office through a, uh, random lot process of registered voters and the other four members would be selected by, uh, yourselves as the Board of County Commissioners. And, uh, those are to be, uh, people who have experience in the human resources uh, domain in various, various fields out there in, in, uh, industry and labor relations. Um, propose that the, that the, uh, commission be set up for a two-year term. And that, um, they would have their first, uh, input to us on May first of twenty twenty-four. So again, I don't know if you guys had, have had a chance to, uh, take a look at the proposed draft, but it's out there for your review and, and commentary. And Mark, I know I still need to get back with you and sync up on this topic as well. And I meant to do that last week, but I got overtaken by events.
Thank you, Steve. So commissioners, have you had an opportunity to look at it, uh, or do you need more time to look at it?
Yeah, I have reviewed it. Um, I, you know, the only question that I have right now.
Lost audio.
That seems to be the norm today for some reason. Can you hear us now, Steve?
Okay. Let's go ahead. Commissioner Netherlands, what were you saying, sir?
I was asking, uh, the commissioners if, uh, they have had an opportunity to review it and if they needed more time. Commissioner Schutte said that he had reviewed it, but I think he had a question that he was, uh, wanting to ask. Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Auditor. Uh, so just kind of a, a process question, I guess. Um, to be able to be as efficient as possible with this, how do you envision us doing the appointment process? You know, we just, great example, we just had interviews from planning committee of their, is there effort to develop a questionnaire for us to use in those interviews to help select qualified candidates is, and would this be also then paired with a, um, a, a press release that would solicit qualified candidates for those spots that we appoint to?
Yep. We would wanna put a, a press release or an advertisement out there saying that we want, where, that we're looking for, uh, uh, volunteers for the commission, but it, as far as I can tell, and I can look into it further, it's really up to your discretion as, as our legislative authority to, to identify people that you would like to propose and have on the committee for the four spots that, that you're, that you guys would fill. Um, if you would want help pulling together a, a questionnaire or some type of criteria, I'd be happy to help with that.
Isn't it prescriptive, the types of people we can appoint to those positions?
Say it again, Kevin.
I- is that, is it not prescriptive who we can appoint to those positions? That they have to fill certain, they have to have a certain background or?
Yeah, they've got to have a background in, in, uh, human resources from a variety of sectors in, in industry, including labor relations. But other than that, it's really up to you and who you would, oh, want to recommend and propose and, and appoint to those four spots on the commission.
And the others done by law?
The others are done by law of the, uh, uh, pool of, uh, registered voters from two, from each district.
Any more questions, uh, Commissioner Schutte?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only, you know, it's just for my own sanity, I guess, just kind of thinking through what the process would look like once you have this group seated and, and what the, what the interface is with H R and, and all that stuff. So I, I'm assuming that those conversations are part of what you wanna continue talking to Mark about. Um,
Yes.
I don't, you know, I don't know that that's necessary to have lined out before we adopt this resolution, but I think it's something that has to be discussed and we have some under, understanding of what the process is gonna look like so that we're able to help facilitate things.
I agree. And, uh, so I'll work with Mark on that and we'll get back to you guys. I know I presented some of that last time in terms of, uh, I think a set of proposed bylaws, the, the commission would need to adopt their own bylaws and operating rules. And they really have, uh, autonomy over that. I know also that there's some, some guidelines that, uh, Diane wanted to have them subscribe to just in terms of, uh, um, operating principles as a, as a uh, entity within the county. And we wanna be sure to incorporate that too.
Commissioner Trask?
Yeah. So just, um, I did a little bit of research too. I looked at Pierce counties, Thurston counties. Um, it sounds like, um, sorry, my phone is ringing. It sounds like this is very similar to theirs. Um, Tim's had the opportunity to review this as well.
That's, I didn't catch the last part, Sharon. Sorry.
Oh, has, has Tim had the opportunity to take a look at this as well?
Yes. And, uh, so there's a spot for him to sign on the, the, uh, resolution as, uh, with his concurrence as to form. But no, Tim and, and I went over, and actually, uh, Prosecutor Dorsey and I went over it together as well.
Yeah, no, it, it looks very similar to, to other counties. Appreciate, appreciate your homework on this.
My pleasure. And, uh, again, I apologize for not having this to you guys by the end of the year. I know things got really busy, uh, with the closeout of twenty twenty-three.
No.
Mr. Auditor, it, it's done what is done. And that's how things work sometimes. Uh, so with that being said, uh, for knowledge that I wanna share with the community and, and you can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, uh, this is a citizen uh, area where this, a citizen committee made up by, by the citizens get to look at how to adjust the wages and, uh, such of the elected officials and only the elected officials. This gives them the opportunity to weigh in whether it should be more or whether it should be less. If it should be, uh, less, it would, uh, come into effect at the day one of the next term of, uh, the elected official. If it, uh, is to be more, it would go into effect, uh, uh, upon their resolve of that. Uh, and if something changes in the middle is where I had my, I think I understand it, but could you explain how that works if something was to change the next year? You wanted them to have the information by a certain time? And then it would go into effect in another way. Could you explain that, please?
Okay, let me just step back through. So we would wanna have them provided with the information that they need to make good decisions on the salaries for elected officials with inputs uh, May first of twenty twenty-four. And that would give us time to weave it into the, uh, the, the budget cycle um, for the, uh, upcoming fiscal year. Salary increases, um, established by the commission shall be effective regardless of the, uh, official's term of office. And they shall take effective immediately upon fa- filing of the salary with the county auditor. So once they have their recommendations or their decision and file it with the auditor's office, those would, those would go into effect immediately if it's an increase. If it's a decrease, um, that would, uh, as far as effectiveness for an incumbent uh, commissioner or elected official, that would take place or take effect with the next subsequent term of office. So your next, uh, the start of your next term.
So one of the things that I also saw in there, uh, I, I want, uh, I'm gonna ask the other commission if they're willing to wait for a week before we, uh, put this on for another agenda. The only reason why is I had two concerns in the original draft. I haven't been able to check, see if it was changed, but one, uh, salary, a citizen salary commission, I want the community to know that it will not be the commission, us commission making the decisions that it will be, uh, them. So I'd like to have it, even though they'd be commission members, I'd like to have them referred to as the citizen salary committee. And the salary committee, uh, making the recommendations and the change. And also you had something in there that had an opportunity for the, by law, for the citizens to be able to appeal it, to referendum it. With that, uh, there is a, a time period, uh, in your original draft, it had it, uh, that it was the increase or decrease went into effect, increase went into effect immediately. But I'd like to see it wait at least until that referendum process to see if it is, uh, challenged by the community but be, before being put into effect.
Well, what if they don't, what if, what if there is no?
Then, then it's put into effect on that date. That's why I say thirty days, or I'm not sure what the date is, that they have the ability to appeal it. Is there a set date? Is there a thirty-day window for appeal? Is there?
I'm not a, aware, uh, yep, it's thirty days after filing. So once the, once the, uh, once the inputs are filed with the auditor's office, there's a thirty-day window for citizens to file a referendum petition.
Yes. And that's what I was thinking when I was talking to Mark. So we might wanna consider just having that little addition instead of it being implemented immediately, uh, when it's, uh, thirty days after to allow for the citizens to appeal.
Okay.
I think you did a wonderful job, uh, Mr. Auditor. I think it, it is done, uh, very professionally and it, as Commissioner Trask says, it is just like the ones that we've seen in some of the bigger giant counties to make sure that the citizens are involved with this process and that it, it is, a lot of the political is taken out and it's put into the hands of those that are being taxed.
So when we tee this up again, I'll have, uh, a language change to state that the increase takes effect thirty days after filing. That's what you're asking.
If, 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 if no appeal, if there is no, uh, referendum.
If there is no referendum.
Yes.
And then you also, uh, if I understood you correctly, you want to call it a um, Mason County Citizens Committee on Salaries, not a Commission on Salaries?
No, I think the commission is the actual legal word. Uh, you know how it, uh, says from this point forward, they'll be referred to as the Citizen Salary Co- Committee. So whenever it comes out with what they're doing, how they're doing it, there's no, there's no confusion between the county commission and the salary committee. Yes. So it's a classification, uh, uh, of this for discussion in the future. So it'll be referred to as that, but legally I think it has to be called the Salary Commission.
I believe that's correct, but, uh, we'll give them a nickname.
Yes.
Well, and I, I think in, in other, in other, um, like in Pierce counties, they call them the Salary Commission. So it's not just a commission, it's a salary commission. And, and that way it, it's very, it's still consistent throughout the document.
It's more clear that way. We, well, whatever is most comfortable with you, all that's the way we'll refer to them.
Now, I don't need to have it wait for the other week. If the other commissioners, uh, don't have any disagreement with what I'm saying, then maybe we put it together, have it briefed for Monday with, with a vote next, also on Tuesday. But have it rebriefed to make sure everybody's comfortable.
There's no briefing next Monday?
That's right.
And that's not gonna happen.
That's right. Get the briefing away, Randy.
A holiday. I don't know. What do you think, commissioners? Uh, can we just have them put that stuff in and I'd be comfortable moving forward?
I don't, I don't know. I, I'd rather stick with Salary Commission instead of Salary Committee. Just because that it, it's, that keeps it consistent throughout the entire document.
It'd still be a Salary Commission. It's just they would be referred to as the Citizen Salary Committee. Uh, when it's doing other documentations and presentations and with the results. So that there's no confusion that it is the county commission, because people don't know these things unless we, we spell it out. Commissioner Schutte, what do you feel about that?
Yeah, I don't really feel anything, I guess. I mean, I, I, I think it's titled that way in statute and it's just simpler. I mean, I, people are gonna draw their own conclusions from this regardless. So I just follow what's in statute.
Okay, then I'll go along with that. What about the, uh, waiting for the thirty days to give the people their ability to, uh, to, uh, referendum this before putting anything into place?
Right. And I believe that that's, that's in the statute. Um, or at, at least that's in some of the other, um, Salary Commission rules and, and procedures that I read, they, they do talk about the thirty-day uh, for the, with the.
For the referendum.
Yeah, the citizens are allowed to, but in this document, unless it's changed, uh, the increase goes into effect immediately. Yeah, the citizens are allowed to, but in this document, unless it's changed, the increase goes into effect immediately and then you go through a referendum process. Which would still be. Living under and that it can be changed by referendum.
We, you know, one thought Commissioner Netherland is that. If the citizens did respond with a referendum within thirty days, that doesn't mean you're gonna have it on a ballot. For a vote within thirty days.
No, I understand that.
So we still have to work the referendum into a special election.
Yes. What I worry about is if the citizens disagree with something that it's put into place that has to be taken back out of place.
Right.
What do you think, Commissioners? If you both feel that we need, we can go just this way, I'll I'll still go the original. I'm not gonna stand in its way in in any way. Having the citizens have an input on this is a great thing. It's not a a bad thing. I just worry about the aspect of something changes, the citizens disagree with it, even though the citizens say it. And then we're put in a position to where it is changed after.
Steve, what's the on the referendum part? What's the what's the amount of signatures that? Somebody would need to gather in order to.
I was afraid you're gonna ask that. Kevin, I'll have to go back and check on that.
It's just a percentage of the previous general election.
I'll I'll get I'll get back to you guys with the exact number.
I I I mean, I I don't. As as long as the statute allows there to be that that kind of a gap, I mean, that could depending on when. Decision is made and when ballots go to print, that could be. Several months potentially, you know, so i if if you're all good with that, I don't really, I don't really care one way or another. As long as we're following the statute.
As long as we're following the statute, I'm comfortable with it.
Just stick. I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry, sure.
I just said that as long as we're following the statute, I'm comfortable.
Okay, so do I hear keep it as it is? Allow for the increase to be immediate? That's what it says in the document.
No, I'm saying if if the statute allows there to be that kind of a gap between a decision of this, the Salary Commission. And it taking effect, then I don't I'm fine with that. But if the statute. Says that you need to make it effective immediately and then you go through the referendum process, then that's what I would want to default to. I wouldn't want to change what's in state law.
Okay, I see what you're saying. I agree with you on that a hundred percent. Commissioner Trask?
Yep, that's that's what I was saying as well.
Okay, so just to. Put it back together again. Mister auditor, if you don't mind, double check what it says in the state law, if it says implemented immediately. In the law, if not, then we'll default back to allowing the opportunity to see if a referendum of the people happens. Before putting it into place. Into into the wages.
I will double check that and then I will also get back to you on the. The petition signature threshold for a referendum.
Okay, and Mark, so you understand where we're at on this and. So with that, we're moving it forward to the next agenda or to the next meeting of the commission and add it to the agenda. There are no objection. I think that's still yes then. Okay, I've heard.
Well, you guys are great. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, Mister Auditor. Appreciate it. Go ahead.
Commissioner, before we move on from that, I mean, it's so. Steve, you had mentioned that you needed to still get with Mark on a few things. I don't. I don't want to. Have anything come out of that meeting that might. Effect the decision on this. I don't know what the nature of those conversations are, but I mean, is that?
Yeah, I think the the conversations with Mark really would start working down to more the operational level, right? How to actually. Pull things together and and. And where we would set these things up and how we would resource. Resource the commission, those types of things, and we'll keep you guys posted on all of that.
Any further comments, questions, or anything for Mister Auditor?
I I just want to confirm, Commissioner Netherland, were you expecting that to be on the regular agenda on the sixteenth? Or would that be the thirtieth?
Oh, it sounded like it was the sixteenth.
Sixteenth, okay.
And Mackenzie currently has it slated for the sixteen.
Okay.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, Mister Auditor. Have an incredible day.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Next up is going to be the Sheriff's Office. Lieutenant Schoenberger.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. So in May of last year, we established a prisoner housing contract with Lewis County. And then in December, I believe, they increased their daily bed rate and. We kind of overlooked the expiration date of that contracts, which ended up expiring the end of December. So we're just asking to extend that contract through twenty twenty four.
So the clarification. So we did pass the the difference in the rate increase already, but we did not include. The extension to twenty twenty four, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Commissioner Shudy, does that answer your concern?
Yeah, so we just we assigned basically a contract in December that got us through the end of December.
Yeah, pretty much. It got us about ten or fifteen days, I think.
Excellent, excellent. Yeah, no, I'm good moving this forward.
Mister Trask.
Yeah, that 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 clarifies my question as well. I thought it was I thought it was odd that we did it and now we're doing it again, but. If we if we always did it for ten or fifteen days, then. Then, yes, absolutely, let's go through twenty twenty four.
Perfect, thank you.
We'll go ahead and put this on the agenda. Does anybody have any questions for the Sheriff's Department while we're on? There are none. Thank you, Shane. Have an incredible day. Be safe out there.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up, Public Health Dave Wyndham.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
So first thing for our first thing of twenty twenty four here. We have the. ConCon Amendment sixteen. So as you know, we have the ConCon, which lasts two years. Amendment sixteen is is the current. Changes. This one is different than we've had in the past, and it adds a couple of new pieces of funding. One of them is. You'll see it says Drug User Health Program. And think of that as our syringe exchange program under a new name is through a different way of going after the funds. And we had talked about this aboard a health a couple of times ago, where we applied for the funding, a lot of other counties did because it looked like a new fund. It's not a new fund, it's just a change from the old fund. So that is in there. The other thing is we have two hundred thousand dollars allocated to. Health infrastructure, health infrastructure. Think of that as people. So. DOH is asking how many people we're gonna have to hiring with this, but we also have the opportunity to use this funding for training, retention. Employee enhancement, that sort of thing. And that's really the kind of direction that we are looking to go with this funding, rather than adding people to the salary. We're looking to enhance what we're doing here already and getting people. Those things that that make their jobs easier and increase their knowledge. So. What we're asking for is to get approval on this. I will put it to the action agenda so that I can sign this because it comes to me electronically. And I've got that electronic payment or track signature on hold until we get this. This through.
Commissioners, anybody have any questions regarding this issue?
Need to move forward.
I won. Sorry, so the the needle exchange. Is there a way that we can get a report as to how many are exchanged?
Yes.
I know when we went on that that. We we walked the rails, so to speak, and. There were a lot of syringes on that. In that area. And so I'm wondering. Where are they getting them? How how are they? How is this? How is this happening? I mean, is our needle exchange really working well?
Well, see, for for us, needle exchange is one for one. So they turn in, they get they get others. So it's it's an exchange, true exchange, but you can purchase syringes at the brick store. You know, for diabetic supplies, that sort of thing. So but I can't get you information on that. Christine's got all that. We can bring that back as in a briefing. We did talk about this at the Board of Health, I think, last time. But this money would really go to enhance some things that I I think. Really need to be enhanced. We've had the syringe exchange for a while, but I don't think it's gone far enough. So this would allow us to do hepatitis C. Testing hepatitis C treatment. HIV testing and then hand off to primary care providers to start the HIV. Treatment. So we're going to this will be doing a lot more than what we've done in the past and really make it more of a. Kind of a whole person. Program.
And so the they're they're actually giving us more authority to. Track like the HIV and other. Because I know for a while, I I think you told me that they took that away.
Yes, yeah, they have. So. They regionalized HIV some years back and it really took. Our vision of what was going on in the county out. This gives us a foothold back into that community. So when we had monkeypox. Last year, we didn't have any good contacts within the community. This will give us not only the the context, but it will get people into treatment.
Oh, that's that's and that's what we're here to do, right, to help people.
Yeah.
Well, it's it's nice that they're giving the resources back to us.
Right.
All right, I don't have any other questions, so.
Thank you. So hey, Dave, I'm I'm with the commissioner on this, so I would kind of like to have those numbers if you don't mind. I'd also like the numbers of the ones that were introducing to other types of treatments and stuff through this process. I'm one of the ones originally I did not like it and then I ended up being convinced in it. When I had to go out and clean up a park and was shocked with how many of the needles were in my little park there in Belfair where the kid, I think it was the bus stop. We're talking hundreds. We picked up hundreds in that little tiny area. So with that, though, I do know that. After probably a six eighth month. Period, it started to get better and things were, there were not near as many of them being found. I got very a lot less calls. I do know that we were helping people and I do know that the community came together after we explained some of the benefits and the idea of getting them off the street. So that your kid don't get stuck by it when you're going out there. So it had many different values. With that, I'm curious, does it has it continued to be beneficial or like many other programs, it starts off so good? And then starts to dwindle down to nothing. So if you could provide those numbers for us in the near future, it would be appreciated because. I don't like doing things as an exercise.
Yeah, no, no, certainly. And what we're finding is that. Drug use itself has changed, so in some ways the 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 needle use is down, but our opioid use of smoking. Opioids and fentanyl especially has gone up, so. The drug. Habits change over time, so we'll bring that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dave on that?
One more, just real quick. Can you also fill us in and let us know how many? Deaths. That we're seeing. You know, different types of drug abuse, drug use like fentanyl or.
Yeah, we can do that. Kind of breaking it down. So and that's that was one of the things we did with the coroner by providing the the equipment she she's able to actually find. What was causing the overdoses and you know which which chemicals are being like a trifecta of fentanyl, methanol and and opioid or something else, so.
Okay, that'd be great. I think I think it's important that we we keep our. Keep Mason County people informed. About what's out there and.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Okay, so we have agreement amongst the commission to move this forward to onto the agenda. Unless I hear anything different. Okay, what else you got, Dave?
Okay, the next thing is I I went through the health officer's contract. It was out of date, had some old days or dates, names. Addresses, so clean that up. And then in the process of look, we haven't done anything with increasing the salary for the health officer, so I. I put in a six percent, which is two hundred forty dollars a month for our health officer for increase going forward in this contract.
Dave, have you run this by HR to have them look at those numbers as well?
Well, they're not a county employee, they're contract.
Commissioners. Comments?
So. I know that we are. Possibly looking to go back out. Because. I think the last time you told me, Dr. Gardner is. Very busy. And so I want to make sure that that we're contracting and getting our monies worth.
Right.
And so. I don't know. I don't know that I'm I'm comfortable with the with the six percent at this point.
So Dave, I think one of the things with that is I get that this is a contracted position, but. Be interested in knowing kind of like. What the six percent is based on. I mean, I don't know if that's. Compared based on our. Comparable counties or other health officers or what. The process is on that and so certainly no issue with. Increasing the the contracted amount if you know, if it. If it's determined that we need to not. Not gonna haggle over two hundred and forty bucks, but just want to make sure that on the. Process side and the data side, that's. What it should be and not just kind of a. Just I I'd like to see some some of the methodology there, I guess.
Okay, yeah, I and I basically took it off of. Three percent per year, last couple of years, have an inflation increase, but I can certainly go back and look at our comparable health officers, most of whom are full time. So we'll have to kind of. Slice that a little bit.
And maybe that's also, you know, how many hours is is she actually is she working and? So that that would be. I'd like to know that.
Yeah, she's she's contracted a point two.
So with that, that brings you back to my original statement. If Mark doesn't mind, it'd be nice if we were to utilize. HR to look at what a point two of the comparables around us would be. Because that's not a hard calculation. We just figure out what the comparable is. And then do a point two and see what what that comes out to. I have no problem with the the small increase either. I just it's process. I just need to make sure that I have the same process for everybody at all times when I can.
And one thing we kicked around is if this next time, if if Dr. Gardner does, you know, want to step back, can we go out for an RFP? And and possibly contract with other counties that may have. Of of time availability to do health officer work for us.
Yeah, that'd be a smart move. I personally, I I don't even like looking at it for the person. I like looking at it for the position, so. I I think the doctor for everything she's done and it doesn't do with my decision where I'm at. I appreciate her. So with that, Mark, is can we get a little help there on HR just to get a a brief idea of where we're at?
Absolutely. Yep, I already messaged Mary about it.
You have any issue with that, Mary? Okay, thank you. Commissioners, are you good with that? If we go ahead and just ask HR to take a look at comparables? Throw it together with a point two and just see where we're at before we make this decision.
Yep, I'd be comfortable with that.
Yeah, me as well. I mean, another example of that is is how we handle the contracted. Superior Court Commissioner position. I mean, they they set that at a certain percentage of. The Superior Court Judge's salary and. We go from there. So. Yeah, definitely, definitely good with a just a quick review to make sure that we're. Doing it the right way.
All right, so on this one here, we're just gonna hold it off for just a bit while you get us more information. Again, I want to make clear I have no issue with the amount or anything like that, so. I look forward to bringing this forward as quickly as we can. Commissioners, do you have any other questions on that issue? All right, or or David, what else you got?
Okay, next we have Melissa.
Melissa.
Good morning, Commissioner. I have a really brief writing this morning. This is just an updated space agreement with Mason Health and the Shelton Family YMCA. Where we will be opening WIC on March first. The current hours of operation are planned to be Monday, Wednesday, Friday, eight AM to four thirty, but we left some language. In the contract to allow us to change it as needed depending on the population's needs, so. This is what it's based on for now. We're just looking for approval for Dave to sign this.
Commissioners, any issue?
I wish.
No, excited.
Same here. Go ahead and put it on.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments or anything for Dave?
I do have one more thing really quick. And that's that we finished up with Mount McDonald's, should have the final. Not draft, yeah, the final draft of the Goldsboro Creek, Johns Creek and the. Study of Raya fourteen that we commissioned last year. This should wrap up the MOA with the tribe that we've been working on since twenty eighteen. So this should be the last of everything should be done today.
David, if you do it, good on you, buddy. Long time coming. Appreciate all your hard work on that.
Yeah.
Commissioners, anything?
No, appreciate the effort on that, Dave. That's a good thing to get wrapped up.
Yep, thank you.
And again, don't mean to step on you, David, just behind on our on our meetings here. So if there's nothing further, thank. And again, don't mean to step on you, David, just behind on our on our meetings here. So if there's nothing further, thank you very much, Dave.
Yep.
Okay, next up, uh Community Development, Kel Rowan.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, okay, our first agenda item we went through this morning. I had, I was just going to ask the commission to inter. Set up an interview with Will Harris, but that happened already, so thanks for that.
With that, Kel, let's take a moment uh and talk about that uh uh. We have three openings. Where are we at for uh positions uh and locations? If we were to accept both of these, are we overlapping on anything or will these fill positions that? They're able to.
That's a great question and I didn't track it this morning, so. Don't know if um. Anyone else is online that's following that, let's.
So I think um I I think uh. If we accepted both, I would put three in District One. And then two in District Three. And then one, the one still in District Two.
Uh out of the three, does that include the one that we haven't discussed that had stepped down?
Yeah, uh no, it looks like that person is off the list.
Mac is off the list, not the.
Who? I have uh. District One, Jeff Carey and Terry RCieri. District Two, Brad Carlberg, and District Three, Bob Wilkerson.
Okay, so it would be three. I got you, okay.
Which is what we had been running essentially.
So how are be- before we talk about the individuals, how are you feeling about that?
Yeah, it's it would be no different than, in my opinion, it'd be no different than how we were, so I'm I'm fine.
Right, and we do have a lot of growth going on up there in in your neck of the woods or will be. Having a lot of growth, I I is I'm assuming um. And then we would just work on District Two, getting one more person and that would be, wow, that'd be a pretty cool to have a full pack.
Yeah, so I'd I'd be comfortable pointing both to those positions and then and then doing another release and maybe just trying to focus. A little bit on District Two and fill that, fill that position, I think would be good to go.
Commissioner Trask, do you agree?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think that it's a good move forward. This will give you um and. An easier time getting a quorum as well.
Uh I agree as well. Can you put something together, a new press release, uh if the commission is okay with it, requesting specifically for District Two?
I can do that.
And then maybe we can have that read on our at our next meeting on the sixteenth. Would would everybody be comfortable with that?
Very comfortable with that. Can you have it together for us to be read on the sixteenth, Kel?
On the sixteenth, um yes.
Alright, uh then we're good on that. What do you got next?
I have just a quarterly update. Uh so now I'm I'm going to be doing quarterly updates for. The SmartGov, our online permitting software. Um, the ARPA funding scanning project. And just our general submittal appointments, you know, that got backed up a couple of different times now in the last. Uh year, year and a half. Um so first is SmartGov. And we do have a lead for SmartGov, so she um has been tackling. A lot of different group, meeting with a lot of different groups on the building side, the um. I went to SmartGov, that's not what I meant to do. Um. Building side, the permit assistance center folks, the planning folks, and then we also met with um. Public Works as well to get them a new permit type that will help our um. I think Mark Neri brought up, there was some redundancies. Uh with our environmental health department. Reviewing and checking and confirming on behalf of our public works department on sewer adequacy. So so you know, environmental health needing the importance of reviewing either septic. Permitting or sewer adequacy. Um and so we um came to a solution that we would create a new sewer. Permit within the. SmartGov permitting software. So once that gets done, that's something just like folks who are building. Uh and need a septic system, that tends to be their very first step in the process of development. Uh same with sewer adequacy, so they would check with the um public works department, deal with that. We could track it through SmartGov. And then we won't have the um, you know, YZH checking on public works type stuff. And so we think that's a good. Uh solution to that issue that has kind of created some unnecessary bottlenecks in the past. Um so we're plugging away on SmartGov. Uh I did include a. Excel spreadsheet in the packet that just shows, you know, we have sixty seven permits um. I don't know if it. Sixty seven different types of permits. Um seventeen of them are available online. Um, we have eleven of the sixty seven are completely cleaned up. On both our end and the online end. We have twenty one of those. Um or and then twenty one additional are. All the meetings with everyone, you know, everyone that's involved has been. Done and noted and now our. Lead just has to put in the work to finalize those, so that'll put us at thirty two permits being completely cleaned up. And then we've got thirty five remaining of where, um you know, we just need to methodically go through. And we're prioritizing, so a lot of the permits, a lot out of those sixty seven, you know, many of them don't get used very often. For example, um. PUD, which is the a planned unit development, which we've had one application now, given the. Um amendments we made last year. So that's, you know, something that happens once. Maybe so. Um so we're making great progress in a pretty short amount of time since we've um. Created that lead position, so I do see that as a temporary position moving forward and um I think. Things are going well, so I'll stop there, see if there's any questions on the SmartGov.
Commissioners?
Not for me, just to comment, I think um I heard that you were going out to Public Works to. Have some trainings with SmartGov with with the folks out there, so appreciate that a lot.
Other for me, yeah.
And um. Then on the scanning project, uh it's been one year, so our two uh. Full-time but temporary scanners, they started January, right after the first of the year last year, and so they've been here a full year with us. Um it took them about three months to kind of get up and going and in a system, you know. Right at the beginning, they had to box stuff up to just create actual office space for them to live. Um so now we are in full swing of them. Going through our documents, scanning, and then they know which of the papers that they scan, which could be tossed, what need to be archived, etc. So we've got. That um is pretty well organized as far as um. How how we're handling all of our documents. We have gotten rid of four. Full-sized four drawer filing cabinets plus um. Several of the uh four drawer but narrow filing cabinets. Um in addition to a lot of large files that we had on top of cabinets. Uh I did do a video last year, um. Just it would have been the end of December of twenty twenty two. And I was waiting for Michael McSem's office to get redone now and I'm gonna redo the video. Uh and then I'll play around with some, see if I can edit to just show um. You know, an annual um. Pro- progress on that project, so. Uh it's a little bit chaotic over here, but you can see, you can physically see the work that's been done, so it's. It's pretty cool um. And uh we have created office space already out of the. Getting rid of the documents, so um. That's been nice and again, just appreciate um. The funding for that project, really important, and I will stop there to see if there's any questions about scanning.
Just to comment, we're saving the lives of the people down below in an earthquake. Anybody that's seen it realizes what I'm talking about. I was always worried about even without a earthquake.
And you know, I really wanted to, um I put in the briefing packet last week and then I was gonna work on getting. Actual numbers because they've been tracking their, you know, the physical number of boxes that they've been able to toss after they've been scanned. So um and then that's been converted to pounds, so I wanted to put that together, but at the end of last week, we've had some. There's a couple chaos things that have required me to be at our prosecutor's office um at the end of last week, so I didn't get those numbers. But for the next quarterly briefing, I'll have like poundage that we've gotten rid of in paper. It's pretty impressive. So. And okay, then I will move on to the um. Uh appointees, so our submittal uh. Folks who need to submit building permits, um that still need an appointment, can't apply online. Uh we were backed up for a while. We got through that and this is just. The update today, I looked this morning, um there's still uh maybe only one or two, but there's still an appointments available this week. And then next week it opens up completely, so we're no longer backed out or backed up. You know, several weeks uh in advance, so we have cleaned up through that and I think we've. For the most part eliminated people. Anticipating needing an appointment, knowing that we're backed up, they go out and get one, and then when it comes to it, they're still not ready, so they kind of. Commandeered an appointment that couldn't be utilized by anyone, so um so that that has, I think. I don't know that it's been eliminated, but that problem has been eliminated and now we're, we have plenty of appointments, so people are thinking a week out. For when they want to submit. Uh we have lots of availability and we do have uh a new. Um permit tech named Anna and she started. Is it just last week on the second? So this is her second week with us. It's very exciting.
That's cool.
So we have Amber, Annie and Anna over in our Anna. Over in our permit assistant center with Jeannie, so the three As. Are there any questions on? Permit submittals or appointments?
None for me, Commissioners?
Nope.
No, what are you gonna next, Kel?
Okay. And then lastly, I have a an amendment to Title sixteen. It went through the Planning Commission and now this briefing is. To put it on the action agenda to set the public hearing. Which I have for February thirteenth of twenty twenty four at nine fifteen. It's to consider amendments. Um it's to a particular section regarding boundary line adjustments. It's an amendment that I had made back when we were doing um. You know, public works updating their road standards and so. Community development, we amended our Title fourteen, Title sixteen, Title seventeen to be consistent with the county. Public Works new road standards and um. I also added just like some housekeeping items to that for Title sixteen and seventeen. And there was concern that there wasn't adequate public notice. Someone was interested in this. They didn't get notification, didn't realize it was happening. So this amendment is literally just undoing the amendment. And then we may or may not, but come forward in the future and we'll just make sure we have adequate public um. Notice for this very specific topic and not. Uh add it on to it, you know, to another item, so that's what this is for. And this is just to set the public hearing.
So Kel, I'm gonna I'm gonna start off on this one because uh I had. I had worries about it when we were doing it earlier and I was not able to communicate, not not David's fault, but my own. Uh where I worry about this and why I'm so afraid of this. I am worried that this is an extreme restriction on. Uh my property rights for my citizens and their ability to do certain things with their properties. And you may remember when I say this, some of the discussions I have, but I have different ways of trying to communicate now. In the past, if you had a piece of property that was your RR five, but your property was. Point two five and the property next to it was point five five, you could adjust that. Uh and go ahead and give up a driveway or whatever because it was already non-conforming. Or you have a piece of property that one, you have two parcels where you have one parcel that is point six. Uh and or or point seven five, we'll say, another parcel that is two and a half. You could were able to use that property line adjustment in order to make both of those parcels livable. Or to change it to where it was more desirable. By doing this, do we take away that ability for all these citizens? Cause that scares me. When I thought about it, I I just couldn't communicate well when you're doing it the first time. I hope I communicated a little bit better this time, that it is something that I think we should worry about. Uh I've always believed that this commission is very, very much a property rights uh commission. They want the people to be able to utilize their property to the highest of their ability, and I've never questioned that with uh this commission at all. I want the commission to know that's where my concern is. If I'm wrong, then please explain to me that I am wrong and I'm hoping I am wrong because we've already done this in different places. But that ability. It has been a bedrock for our community to be able to do these things. They have a dispute over a driveway and the other parcel is non-conforming. Uh they need to be able to still do and get rid of that dispute on that driveway. Uh as just an example, so.
Yes. So let me see if I can do this without getting really convoluted, it's. Um, the amendment that I'm bringing forward is something that was amended to clarify. So that we could continue to process boundary line adjustments in the way that you described, which we have always done. However, in a normal boundary line adjustment procedure that we had done, like we do with others, we were challenged on that. And with this code, uh this code section specifically. That indicates that we would not be allowed to do that, like you couldn't, you know. You could never do a boundary line adjustment between lots that were non-conforming in lot size. Um. Which we, I personally think is ridiculous and not the intent. Of our code and if you read the section. Past this. Subject section. And so. I made the amendment to clarify. That unless your lot is already legally non-con or you know, you have to meet all the. Current codes, unless your lot is already legally non-conforming, we'll still allow that boundary line adjustment. The same person who had challenged us in the boundary line adjustment procedure. That used this code section prior to its amendment. They didn't like that they have. They they challenged that they didn't have adequate public notice that I was amending it to say unless already legally non-conforming. So I'm now unamending that. Or make an amendment to go back to the way it was originally. And then I would like to bring forward in the future. But spend time with Luke Viscusi, our 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 new subdivision planner. To go over Title sixteen, which is Platts and subdivisions and Title seventeen, which is our development regulations that also has. Many codes that relate specifically to boundary line adjustments and other type of. Band or um. Lot line. Items. And to go through that methodically and really comprehensively, look at our code and then bring forward at one time. You know, those code amendments that we think are necessary so that we can continue to do boundary line adjustments between lots that are legally. Non-conforming as to lot size. And so. I hope that answers your question.
I I think I understood, let me.
And I think we're on the same page.
Yeah, let me clarify what I think I heard. What I said was right and you're trying to get, but because of the technicality, uh we need to go back, clear it out so we can get it in clean. Uh but you have full intentions of making sure that right exists. Uh for the citizens in the long term, you just need to do this in order to get there without a challengeable action.
Yes.
Okay, then I'm gonna I'm gonna be supportive. I'm gonna ask you, please do it ASAP. You never know what tomorrow holds and that is such an important thing.
Yes.
To have it not be uh allowed. Would cost my community a lot of money, a lot of future opportunities, so please do it ASAP, but I'll be supportive. So please do it ASAP, but I'll be supportive at this point. Commissioners?
No, I'm good.
I am as well.
Thank you for explaining that Kel and for doing it this way. Cause you're right. I don't want it challenged. I want them to be able to do what we've done historically and counted on. So thank you for, for cleaning it up.
Yes. Yeah. And then with that, that's all that I have.
Any questions for Kel? Hearing none, thank you very much Kel and have yourself a great day.
Yep, you too.
Next up, Loretta from Public Works.
Good morning.
We're so far behind.
That's okay. We'll try and make up some quick ground here. First up, Mike has a request to authorize him to sign an agreement, a permit with Army Corps of Engineers.
So we have these two culverts, uh, Great Ben and, and Katie. We applied for the Army Corps permit back in two thousand twenty one. Uh, we got a little response, uh, to no response whatsoever. So in two thousand twenty two, we went ahead and installed the, uh, structures because we had the funding there. We had the, uh, the, the, uh, road closed, the whole world. Uh, we, we notified, uh, we've been in communication. We notified Army Corps all along each time we, we, we went to make a move. And there was just no response. So here recently, uh, Army Corps has sent us a letter saying that we're in violation. We need to, uh, cease and desist. Well, we did cease and desist because we're done. But, uh, uh, they want us to get an after the fact, uh, uh, permit and, and that's okay. Uh, what they really had was there were shortage of people. Uh, they were working from home, uh, they just never responded and they know they're kinda at fault, but they're still trying to act a little tough. Uh, so they want us to sign this tolling agreement. That means basically, um, they can still come after us if, uh, if we don't follow through with the after action, um, uh, permit. So we'd like to go ahead and follow through. We've actually applied already for the after action permit. And, uh, it looks like we'll be good.
Do you see any downside to this, Mike?
Uh, no, I don't see any downside. Like I said, we've been.
What you said, yeah.
Nope, nope.
I'm supportive, commissioners?
Sounds good to me.
Uh, Tim has been read in on this. Tim's old. Okay. Okay.
All right, next.
All right. Clear zone.
Um, Clearzone, we're still waiting. Uh, we're, uh, the, uh, the market is, uh, in the dump. And so the contractor is trying to find a buyer uh, for the Eppendahl Pass, uh, Clearzone for, uh, DNR, put a contract out. So the contractor's there. I mean, he's, he's, he's around, but he's just not, uh, not performing any of the work yet. They didn't want to really do a whole lot when it got, uh, um, raining too much anyway. So we're in the middle of winter. So we're kinda, we're just waiting for them to decide when they're actually gonna start, uh, the activity. It's only been three years.
That's all.
Questions, commissioners?
None, just not for me. Three years, wow.
Hey, Loretta.
Okay, that's it. Other than Lucky here. I don't know if I'm sharing. Live camera up at Duwato.
Oh, my goodness.
It's here.
Wow.
Yeah. Um, and just a quick hats off to Mike and Jeremy and the, um, fire chiefs who were willing to pilot, um, um, snowplow project or operation. So some of the, the districts are willing and able to, to help in that regard. So, um, it'll come in handy.
Uh, how much snow do they? Yeah. How much snow do they have at Cushman?
Uh, I don't have a, uh, I didn't look at that one. Sorry, Commissioner.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
You know, those people up there. Are you guys ready for, uh, the, the the projected snow that we're gonna be receiving?
We are ready, yes. Yeah.
So Loretta, you already contacted me back on that one on Mason Benson Road, but hopefully we'll send somebody out ASAP to at least fill in the whole, uh, on that side temporarily until we decide what we're gonna do with it. I had, I didn't get a chance to stop in there. I was out, out of state when that came through, but if we could just make sure we do that as soon as we can.
Yep, I was taking a look at the, um, Google Earth image there and it looks like it's been there for a bit. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a better reason than any to get it done tomorrow then.
Yeah, it's, I, I'm assuming it's DOT's right away there. It's theirs, but we'll, we'll follow up for sure, Commissioner.
Please. And the other thing is, is, uh, more of a reminder, we had a small discussion. I hope you're working to looking at, um, lighting the intersection at Victor. Where the fire station is, the, the grange is and people are coming on and hopefully look at, uh, some type of talking with them regarding flashing lights on that curve after you go past it. Where there seems to be more and more accidents and going into their yards and busting through. Just having something to slow them down to some type of flashing light warning would probably help be better than nothing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I know that, um, Dave and I'm not sure who all had gone out to take a look at poles in the area to see where, what lighting could occur on existing structures there. I believe it's gonna require a, a new pole placement. So I'll follow up on that, Commissioner, and see where, where that's, where that sits right now.
Okay, uh, is the speed, uh, the speed sensor in Belfair still there? Somebody called me and said it's gone.
Could they take? Or at which location?
Uh, the one, uh, coming, uh, uh, I think they're talking about the one past, um, uh, like McClendon's area and stuff like that at Belfair Street.
Okay, so, so on SR three?
Yeah, when they lowered the speed limit, did they take down that speed sensor that we paid for?
Oh, okay.
So let's find out about that, please.
Okay.
I said, I don't know if it's ours or the sheriff's.
I think it's the permanent one, Mike, that we're talking about. Yeah. Okay, yep, we will check that out as well.
That's what I had. Commissioners?
Um, Loretta out on, um, Craig and Cole, there's, there was an RV parked in the Mason Transit lot and now it's parked right. So as you come off coal, it's on Craig. So if there's anybody that you know, with the, the ice that could happen, we, somebody could crash right into that. So I don't know whether you wanna reach out to the sheriff's office.
Okay. It hasn't been tagged then yet, Commissioner?
No, it hasn't. It, it's been there, but it was in the transit.
Okay.
For about a week and now it's been there for a couple of days.
Okay, yep, we can do that.
That's all I had.
All right.
Thank you. Commissioner Shiddy?
Yeah, I'll add to the laundry list. Uh, so just, uh, on Manzanita where you guys have your trench.
Yes.
Travelled in, um, that's starting to break down a little bit. It's like there's a decent sized potable informant in the kind of on the, on the, uh, outbound lane, I guess, on that side.
Okay. Alrighty. It's a, a temporary patch for the new cross culvert. Commissioner, is that where you're, okay.
Yep. So you might just wanna throw some more in there.
Okay.
We get it finished.
All right. Mike's over here nodding.
And the other Public Works? Hearing none, thank you very much. Loretta, talk to you soon.
Okay, thank you, commissioners.
All right, Mark, next up is you.
Alrighty, TJ, you wanna talk about Tyler and the cloud?
Sure. Morning, commissioners? So IT is recommending that, uh, we move Venus to the, the cloud solution that they offer. Um, Tyler has made it clear that their main focus moving forward is the cloud service and that all new features will be available there first. Um, they have not been any kind of end of life on the on-premise system, but normally when we see this as a precursor to them moving fully cloud and getting rid of on-premise. So, um, I believe this was at least talked about during the budget process, uh, rates have been adjusted to account for this cost. So, um, we're just looking for approval to have, uh, Mark Neary sign the contracts. We can move forward with the migration.
Any questions or obje- objections? Nope, I'm good as well.
All right, thank you.
Graham?
Yep, I'm here. I have just some advisory board business on the Mason Transit Authority. You have two positions to fill and you receive six applications. So I'm asking if you want to interview?
Yes, please.
And then for scheduling, next Monday's a holiday. So Mackenzie and I were considering scheduling the interviews following the commission meeting on Tuesday. And I just wanted to get an idea of how long should we anticipate for the solid waste hearing? Cause that's the only hearing scheduled that morning.
Well, you're at, of all people, we would ask you, Diane, how long are you anticipating?
Well, I was thinking an hour. We're gonna start at ten and then we thought, is that reasonable? I don't know where it was at. Do you think if we schedule these interviews starting at ten, do you think that's reasonable?
Like it is.
I do as well.
Yeah, okay. So we'll reach out and schedule all six then, starting at ten. And then the next advisory board is the Timberland Regional Library. Grace Harbor is asking for concurrence of their appointment. Is the board good with that?
Yep.
We will fit.
Okay. And then we wanna issue a news release for the Lewis Mason Thurston, the area aging, area agency on aging. There's a couple openings on that one.
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll put it next week. Thank you.
Rob, Dan, Mary. Your strategic plan update?
Good morning, commissioners. So my, um, strategic plan, I committed to come quarterly to update you. So I actually, the end of twenty three is the second document in your packet. And I just wanted to draw your attention to a couple of things. Um, one is that we have no open contracts right now. So we completed all of them on time before expiration in twenty twenty three. Um, we've really been getting out in the community more and attending recruitment events, getting out, um, not only to our local events, but getting out to a lot of the colleges and anything that we, uh, are given heads up on today. Um, Richard told me about a, um, wastewater conference that will be in Ocean Shores in March. We're committed to sending materials and/or attending ourselves on the vendor floor to get out there and do some recruitment. Um, our followership on social media has definitely gone up, um, in twenty three. Um, really excited about the chart of accounts so we can use Munis. And, um, we also did our employee engagement survey. So that closed December twenty second. So I will have results and, uh, report for you on that in the next, uh, couple of weeks. And I think our HR staff is plugging along. Um, we all had our evaluations are done and have some plans going for next year on, um, development. I think as a team, we're gonna study for some, um, certifications through SHRM, um, get some HR certifications for continuing education. So that'll be nice. So flipping back then to twenty twenty four, some of our big goals, um, and initiatives are going to be, um, obviously getting our twenty four contracts done on time, which will be a, a big, big goal. We really wanna start digging in deeper into yoga for statistical updates and then looking for what are our key performance indicators as an organization when it comes to recruitment and hiring. Um, we wanna keep being out, um, in the, in the community and start actually measuring first year turnover to see how long are we keeping employees, um, if and when we're losing them. Why we have started conducting exit interviews. I also think it would be good from an engagement perspective to start doing state interviews. Why do employees stay with Mason County? What do they love about Mason County? What can we expand upon and make better? So that's another thing that we like to do. Um, I'd really like to get off the ground some kind of, um, manager supervisor training upon promotion. I think a lot of times we, um, any organization, you ha- you promote somebody and expect them to just know how to be a manager or supervisor overnight. And I think that's unrealistic. Um, and so I'd like to see if we can start moving in that direction to well equip our leadership moving forward. Um, let's see. We'll continue with our employee engagement and really gonna make some move on risk this year. Uh, Nicole's gonna be on board with, you know, kind of evaluating our organizational risk at a holistic perspective, I think is really important. And then making sure we get all of our policies and procedures updated this year when it comes to risk. So those are just the highlights. I know we're behind on schedule, but any questions for me or comments?
It's common, I think you're, you're you are the HR director I've dreamed of. So, good job.
I have no questions on that, but, uh, sort of other things you were gonna talk about regarding our retention?
Yes, I just didn't know if anybody had anything for this.
Nope, waiting on you for the other one.
Okay, all right. So the other thing I wanted to put forward was we have, and I, I didn't have a, a, uh, formal item, but I did wanna pitch out for the commission to discuss or consider. We have had some difficulties over in the prosecuting attorneys and public defender's offices when it comes to hiring. We've had positions sitting open. Um, just as long as the finance manager and public works had. And so I think it might be worth exploring a potential hiring bonus over there to start and then maybe considering, um, retention. So I just wanted to throw that out there for some discussion.
Yeah, I guess, uh, we, we'd like to see you put that together ASAP, uh, bring forward, uh, to also include, uh, um, others non-represented all the way through to the top, uh, in those, uh, departments, uh, including the public defender as well.
Yeah, I think, you know, being able to put together, uh, you know, for all of our JD holding um, staff and prosecutor's office and public defender's office with the retention and recruitment, um, plan, I think is what we wanna do.
Yeah, I agree. I think we, we need to, e- e- every place is, is having difficulties. It'd be it'd be pretty cool if they were like, well, let's go to Mason County because because they've invited me. So I, I like it. And you might, hey, yeah, you might as well stay when you're here.
That's right. We appreciate you, Mary, putting all that together and our commission, uh, understands the situation that we're in. So I think we all would like to see it, uh, as soon as possible and, uh, give as much opportunities we can to, uh, capitalize on the weaknesses in the other, uh, counties and communities around us as well.
All right, will do. Thank you.
I think that, uh, based on information that was provided to me by our prosecuting attorney, um, nationally, there's a shortage of attorneys out there and, and so this is a challenge that many, uh, governmental entities are facing. Hopefully this will help us at lea- uh, so I appreciate the fact that you want us to look at how can we retain the ones that we have. Cause trying to recruit new ones is, is difficult. So hopefully it'll help on both sides, but, uh, good to, to take care of the people that we've got already.
And we look forward to something, uh, for our next, uh, uh, meeting after that there's.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Alrighty, Becky, do you wanna talk about civil service?
Yes, uh, good afternoon, commissioners. So, uh, we have a resignation that came in from one of the three, um, civil service commission members and he has moved out of the county. And so I'm asking that we, uh, be able to put a news release on the agenda for the sixteenth.
Sounds good to me.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alrighty, Jen, wanna talk budget schedules?
Yes, so good morning or good afternoon, commissioners. So we have the, um, twenty twenty four, the budget amendment calendar. I have proposed, um, two amendments to the twenty four budget, one in June. Um, the eighteenth of June and then one in December on the seventeenth of December. Um, this has worked really well the last few years to have two scheduled. Um, we've actually stuck to it the last couple of years during the two. So, um, just wanted to bring this forward to you and if you're in agreement, I'll send it out countywide.
Boy, am I ever in agreement. Uh, I was here when it was the Wild West, uh, uh, January second, we had budget amendments being considered. So I am more than excited, commissioners?
I am, uh, good to send it out.
Great, thank you very much. Yeah, it was kinda crazy times before, so it's nice to have it settled down. And, um, just to keep you in the loop, the chart of accounts, um, we are still working on that. We ran into a snag with, um, the junior taxing districts, specifically the school district. So we're trying to work that out um, with the treasurer's office and we have a meeting scheduled the eighteenth to, um, keep pushing forward so we can get this done. So, um, just wanted to update you on that. Um, the next thing that I have for you is the, uh, termination of the Mason County Housing Authority contract. The status, um, of that. The status of that, so we terminated the contract that we had, the ARPA contract as of November thirtieth, and gave the housing authority until December thirty-first to turn in any, any proof of payment or or refund the county. So the amount that we fronted to the housing authority was seven hundred and fifty thousand of ARPA funds, and they've proven two hundred eighty-one thousand, five hundred sixty dollars and seventy-one cents. And so they either need to prove that they have spent on eligible items, four hundred sixty-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents, or refund that amount to the, to the county. And we did not receive any communication with them as of December thirty-first, so this is just an update. And just wanted to see if you had any recommendations on where to go from here and I can confer with Tim Whitehead on this. But just wanted to let you know, get your input first.
My recommendation, if there is any type of refundable that we put forward, put out there, that there still is a drop dead date for any of that, because we have a lot of other things, we talked as a commission about funds going back into a pot to be reallocated out. In order to do that, there has to be time available and the money has to be in place to do that. So I would think that if there's any type of other reimbursable, there's a drop dead date. What, what were you saying were those dates for allocation? I know it has to be used by twenty-six, has to be allocated by?
By twenty-four, the end of twenty-four. And so we would have to have that ahead of time in order to, you know, make the twenty-four meeting.
And to make our decisions, though, we'd want to know by at least the middle of twenty-four, though, before we made any decision, to make decisions on how to re-spend money. So I would think that the valve has to be turned off before that point, so we know what monies are already used.
Yeah, so we gave them until the thirty-first. I'm really concerned that we received no communication back from them on that. I received an email also from the state auditor. They are having trouble receiving any communication, so they were reaching out to us to find out if we had a contact that they did not. So the fact that they're having trouble getting ahold of them is very concerning also.
So maybe we can consider this the drop dead date?
I mean, the drop dead date was December thirty-first.
No, but you said something about for reimbursable stuff in there.
Yeah, it was December thirty-first.
Okay, because we don't want to leave it out there, is what I'm saying. So we consider this as a commission, four hundred sixty-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars, twenty-nine cents as what's supposed to go back into the pot for ARPA? For ARPA redisbursement?
So Commissioner, can I add a few?
Yeah, please.
So one of the concerns that we had was that the housing authority was not turning in their quarterly statements to show us how that, those funds were spent. So we had talked to them and said, if they return those funds, that in the past, it was my understanding the commissioners would be willing to go on a reimbursement basis. So then they could provide us actual receipts or information associated with how the, the money would be spent for that original purpose. And we would hold that money to reimburse them. My concern is we haven't heard back from the housing authority, and so I'm not sure how to move forward now. But, but that is something that I would like to, to just remind the commissioners that, that we had at least extended that option, that we would go to reimbursement basis for the rest.
And that's what I was saying, but at some point.
I
Go ahead, Michelle.
You know, I, I think the, I think where we go from here is we work with Tim to get the four hundred sixty-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents back into the ARPA pot. And I don't have any confidence right now in the housing authority to be able to even hint at being able to reimburse for things there. I think the way that, that this has been handled has just been very poor, and I don't think that, I don't think that we have a partner over there that we can trust right now. And so I think unfortunately, based on the fact that when you did extend them that opportunity, they didn't take it, increases that level of concern even more. And so I think we have to take it back, and I think, in my opinion at least, that they've lost the opportunity to go on a reimbursable basis here. And we need to just move on and, and figure out how we're going to put that money to work in the community. And so I think, I think you all were very generous. I probably would have asked to have this money returned to the county in November last year. And I think your generosity was met with, you know, disregard, and I think the way that the housing authority has, has approached this is, is really concerning and maybe emblematic of other issues that exist there. I remember last year having a conversation with the folks from the housing authority who came onto one of our briefings, and they blindsided Commissioner Netherland with the sale of those properties. And so they, they, they've kind of proven themselves to be going rogue on a lot of these things, and I think we've been very generous with support both from the general fund and support from ARPA. And, and our staff, Jen and Kate in particular, have, have had to bear the brunt of, of their indignation about having to report quarterly or having to provide documentation or having to be held to any kind of accountability with how they're spending these, these dollars. And I just don't think that that's behavior that we should be rewarding. We wouldn't tolerate that from other beneficiaries and sub recipients that we have ARPA agreements with, or frankly, anybody that we do business with, with the way that staff has been treated and, and the way in which information has been presented, and in most cases, not presented. So I think we just have to cut our losses here and, and figure out what we do with, 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 with what's left over in ARPA. And glad we were able to put some money to use there and, and get some work done. But ultimately, they decided the path they wanted to take, and that, that has consequences.
So on, on that, I'll jump in. I'm not going to go after any of them for any of the stuff, waylaying or anything like that. But I do want to thank them for improving the quality of life for all those people that are in there. I want to thank our staff for everything they did to go through everything that they, they did to try and help in every way that was possible. I do not think that it's coming to a positive close, so I think it is time to close this, this chapter of the book as well. And I think that we need to, I think the proper way would be, what Kevin had just mentioned, perhaps we have Tim weigh in on how to go through and start that process to close this chapter and move on. And then we can decide how best to, to utilize this money in the community for other things, since it was not used or accepted. And, and I will say, there's a lot of disappointments there, but again, I want to be appreciative of everything there is around, but understanding that those opportunities have to end, and I think that time has, has passed.
Yeah, I definitely want to see if we can get that money back. My concern is not them not having the money to give back. And so I think bringing Tim in is very important to discuss a path forward. I'm also very disappointed with how our staff was treated by certain members of that, of the housing authority. There was no reason for them to come in here, for that person to come into our, our building and yell at our staff. And, and the, the things that was said was, it was awful. And so I'm concerned about the housing authority moving forward. And I know that there are members on that board that, that have a passion for what they're doing. But I guess my concern going forward now is just trying to get back the money that has not been received.
And I do know there's been sales, so now's the time to request funding. And as things are closing up on that, so time is of the essence. So I guess my question to the other commissioners as well as Mark is, we all seem to be in agreement that this is, needs to be done. And we all think that, of course, bringing in Tim is the next obvious step. Is there anything you need from us, though, because of contracts and stuff to do that?
Well, I think that you, y'all three signed the letter, including Tim's signature on it. So I would recommend we work with Tim to, to provide maybe a more influential communication to them about the seriousness of this request. Jen, I don't know, have you talked to Tim recently about additional things that we could do or?
No, not since the letter was sent out.
Okay. So let's talk to Tim about that and get his perspective on how we could move forward. But I think Commissioner Netherland makes a good point. If they potentially have funds now that they received from the sale, it would be a good time to, to move on that.
And we want to make sure if there's an action that's necessary, that we can do the action that we need to do as soon as possible. They may, because we may have to, to actually put together, you know, a change because of the agreement, we may have to foreclose in this sense. I don't know what that is. But I do know that if we don't ask and we find out in the middle of it, and there's more time delay, that there can be an issue there.
Yeah, maybe we could do it or something like that. I don't know how that would work, but we can talk to Tim. I'll talk to Tim about that and bring it back.
But to the commission, go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, I think Commissioner Trask made a really, really important point when, you know, it's like, hopefully they have this money to be able to give back to us. I know that there has been the sale of some properties and, and all that kind of stuff, but it's, I think Mark and Jen maybe, you know, take an opportunity to, to talk with Tim and Leo and maybe SAO about like what, like what happens if, if there, there is not, no money there to, to give back? And what, you know, I mean, this is as much about accountability as it is truncating our liability for this money and, you know, what, what happened to it after we granted it out? And so I, I just, I'd like you also to be prepared with some contingencies for us. You know, should, should they not communicate with us going forward or not give us any money, any of this money back? And just, you know, I want to prepare for kind of the worst case scenario here because of, of how, you know, they've kind of approached things to this point, and the radio silence throughout December is concerning on that front, too. So I just, I want to be prepared for everything with this.
So on the good note for the commissioners, just to let you know, though, aside from how this has ended in, and I do believe that the money's there or will be. So I do believe we're going to be giving that back. With that being said, I want the commissioners to know that not all of it was to follow you. There's been some incredible things that have occurred. Apartments and stuff have been brought to a living standard that was reasonable. I think you all saw some of the pictures. It was, it was so disgustingly horrible. So with this, this money, the commission did help out in many different ways to bring up the standard of living and to make more units livable to the community, which was our goal here. It is sad that it ends the way that it does, but let's get that money back and put it back into use in another way that will benefit the community again, just like we did with the monies that were already spent there. There are some beautiful things that we still can do, and I look forward to seeing what we accomplish with it. It'd be, I'm hoping that we have an additional four sixty-eight that we can show on the books shortly. And that'll bring our numbers up to where it's worth going back out for ARPA.
Here's the, here's the thing, though, that I think really concerns me about it is that if in order to pay us back the four hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars, they had to sell two buildings in order to cover those costs, then I wonder where that money actually went since they weren't able to provide invoices. It's not the fact that, you know, now that they've sold these two buildings, they're flush and they could pay us back. It's the fact that since they've had the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and have only been able to, you know, be able to prove that they've spent two hundred and seventy thousand of that or whatever, like where did the rest of that money go if they have to rely on the proceeds from the cell in order to pay us back? I think that's the main concern that I have and why I think it's important for us to have both the legal and auditing side of this conversation so that the taxpayers are truly protected and that we have some understanding of, you know, I don't want to, I'm, I'm not going to, you know, was there fraud? Was there misallocation? Was it incompetence? Some combination? I don't know. But the fact of the matter is if we also, if by giving them this seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, it caused them to cut in half their available inventory of housing in order to pay us back, that's super concerning.
Yeah, I don't know that it was done to pay us back. That I can't, I can't answer to because I don't know that. I don't know what it came down to in the bank and stuff like that. I'm just saying that I do know that with the sales, those money, those dollars should be there. And I would expect that we would ask for the money ASAP when we know that monies are, are coming in. So I understand what you're saying. I don't disagree with you, and that is for the, for the auditor, I would think of to look at some of that stuff. But as for getting the money back, I just would like to see it back in our, our bank as soon as we can.
Yeah, I'm, I'm worried that we won't. And so the quicker we move, the better. On, on this one, and then I will honestly hesitate to provide any more assistance in the future.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Okay, great. I will talk to Tim and bring back an update on his recommendation. I'll talk, I'll also talk to Leo and SAO again.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
What else you got, Mark?
Oh, that was the last item I had on my agenda. I did want to bring to the attention of the commissioners. I got a message from Deb Mungia, she's our lobbyist. Legislative session is starting up today, so with that comes a, a lot of new information that gets thrown our way and, and sometimes is challenging to get all three of you updated, read at the same time. But there was an item that she sent me yesterday that I thought would be important to discuss and help, the House Bill twenty-two eleven. This is, allows for a councilmatic increase of the public safety sales tax. So this is three tenths of one percent. If the county does not impose it, then the cities are allowed to impose it. And the, yeah, so it's, it's, I can send you some information on it. And the deadlines that I'm seeing now, obviously, this is just a bill, and so it takes time to get through legislature. But definitely wanted to, to get this one on your guys' radar. And if you could individually provide me feedback, that would be great unless you have something you'd like to say.
The one question I have on that, though, is at first blush, when you first said that, I got nervous. But if, if it's like the other one, it's not as bad as it sounds. The original one, they could implement it, and then we can come in after the fact, you know, if something happened and it implemented over the, the county and then things were adjusted. Is that the same with this, or they just implement it and collect the money?
Well, there's, there's definitely restrictions associated with how you spend the funds, Commissioner. So you would have to impose, you'd have to implement new items. It couldn't be used to just supplement the existing funding that we put towards law and justice. But I believe it does, just from information that I've seen, it does add co-responder and treatment services to the definition of, of criminal justice. So
Well, see, I don't want to
That they're, they're actually having a, a hearing on it this afternoon. And Representative Griffey was approached to sign on to the bill in support of. And so Deb was reaching out to us to see if we had any feedback for that.
Personally, I'm not in support of adding a tax today into Mason County residents. But again, what I need to find out is, is if it doesn't happen here, if the city can take it all, is the question. Because then they still get, get taxed. So there's definitely importance through the counties for having that as an option. Commissioner Trask serves on the committee now, but they've been talking about that for years, allowing for those opportunities for the counties that choose to do it. But boy, done on a situation where it's choose it or lose it, and somebody else takes it would be a whole different type of conversation that needs to be had.
Yeah, so just, I'm looking at the bill language right now. So does this basically, does this just, so we can do this currently, but it's by a vote of the people? Does this just add a councilmatic option to that?
That's what I'm understanding.
Because the city already has their portion of the public safety sales tax in place.
Yes.
And so if we were to, there's, there's a cost sharing mechanism if we were to pass something on a ballot measure. So I don't think this is anything new other than the mechanism to adopt.
Oh, that's different.
Given, well, so this is, my understanding of it, Commissioner. Well, so this is, my understanding of it, Commissioner, is that you have um. Currently, you could put it on the ballot to collect it.
Yeah.
This would actually. This would actually change it to allow you to do it through an ordinance, so a councilmatic. To to place it into operation, and there is components of it that that says if the county does not impose part or all of the tax by July first, twenty twenty four. Cities are allowed to impose the full rate or the remainder by ordinance until one, one, twenty twenty seven. So that was concerning to me.
That's new.
Yeah, but that's for the a three percent that already exists, right? Not, that's not an additional.
So it is not an additional, correct? So we, I believe that the city did, and the county has not imposed anything, right? But the city did impose.
Point one.
Point one?
Hmm.
Um, so I did, I would believe that this would. This would be applicable to the remaining point two tenths.
Interesting.
Yeah.
All right, can you um, can you make sure that I'm included on those since I am am on LSC? Um, if if Deb could just. Include me in her emails, I'd appreciate that a lot.
Absolutely.
I actually think it's, oh. I was just gonna say, I think it'd be helpful if you or she forwarded it to all three of us um weekly. It would be great to have a weekly update from from Deb. And she could, she could send it to you and you can forward it out to us or whatever is more convenient, but I think it would be great that way. That way, if there are things that come up on on a Friday update, we can be prepared to talk about them together on a Monday, and we don't have to worry about. You know, playing catch up and that kind of thing. Uh, you know, I'm, this is, this is an interesting process kind of bill. I mean, I don't know. Maybe take a look, we'll take a look at the video from the hearing this afternoon and and kind of see what the testimony looks like, but. I mean, at this point, I would, I would probably be a wait and see and and just kind of. Where things end up after today. I don't necessarily know enough to have an opinion yet.
Commissioner, should you wouldn't mind after you're done uh on on our next briefing, could you brief us on this uh? Uh, and your opinion, what what you see, if you're gonna watch those videos and stuff? You've been there, you know, you know what what we're looking for and what is gonna be concerning to us. If you wouldn't mind briefing us on it, uh, it'd be appreciated.
Always happy to share an opinion.
Uh, what about, uh, do we want to ask? Uh, that uh our lobbyist contact and uh go in support of the. Uh, Evergreen College thing that we just had uh before us.
I'm good with that.
Yep, that's fine.
You go, Mark.
Alright. Sorry. That's on my list, so we're good.
I was looking for twenty two eleven on the the LSC list and the the report, and it's not on there, so I'm gonna contact also. Um. LSC and see what their thoughts are.
And brief us with that, too, please.
Yeah, I got a list of, uh, I got a list of. The twenty twenty four session, I'll send it to you. It was, I I thought it was smaller than it was. It's hundred and forty three pages, but be happy to send that along.
A lot of bills for a short session.
Uh, it sure seems like it, doesn't it?
That's ridiculous.
That's because they get this everybody to get in early, remember?
So you know, the interesting, looking at, looking at the email, Mark, that you forwarded over to us.
Uh huh.
You know, I, it it'll be interesting to see if there is alignment between our association and AWC, because it looks like this was request. Uh, like a legislative request from the city of Kent. Which is, which is like, I guess, why, you know, it gives, because it does give cities a lot more flexibility if if their county doesn't act, so. You know, Commissioner Trask, that might be a another conversation to have at LSC is is, you know, just are we aligned with AWC on this or? Um, you know, it it'd be interesting to see if Rep. Griffey does sign on or or what is. What his position ultimately becomes on it, just out of curiosity.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't see twenty two eleven in any of this material, so I'm actually surprised that it has a hearing this afternoon if it wasn't on our on our calendar.
It looks like it's just the deadline to sign on to it today. I don't think there's been a hearing scheduled, at least, at least not on the legislative website.
Okay.
I didn't see it on there either.
Oh, there we go. I would agree with you. Thank you.
All right, anything else for us, Mark?
Nothing else.
Commissioners, do you have anything for Mark?
Nope.
And we agreed uh to uh bring on those uh two positions for a vote. Uh, for the interview today. Uh, Commissioner discussion, I'll start with one little one. Commissioner Trask, I was sent an email. Uh, regarding emergency management, they think somehow you are that are cert- certified. I don't know if you are, I am, but. The if they think you are, they asked me to send it to you, so I sent it to Mark, of course, so that he can send it to you. That's what that is.
Okay.
Okay?
That works, and I was certified when I was at the legislature, but it only lasts for um. I believe two years, maybe two or four years, and then you have to get recertified.
So training is wonderful. We need to.
Oh, awesome.
They're asking for, they're asking for us to put together more. I agree, uh, that we should anyway, so we'll, we'll look at that after you guys see the email and we'll. Talk about whether or not we can put together some more cert trainings again.
Yes, I think that's a great idea.
Wonderful. Any other commissioner discussion? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
They're moved.
Second.
Hearing none, uh, we are adjourned. Uh, Commissioner Trask, I'll say it was sure nice sitting here in in the the cheap seats for this last year, just watching and enjoying and not having to do. All the orchestrating and stuff, uh, so if I didn't tell you before, appreciate you.
Ah, thanks. It's an adventure.
Bye, everybody.
Yeah.